It will be put on YouTube from here, so sorry you didn't get to see our faces again should you decide to watch that. But due to the technical difficulties, it will not be livestreamed this evening. So, welcome to the full council ceremonial meeting of Thetford Town Council being held here on Tuesday, 29th of November, and we are now starting the meeting proper at twenty past. I'll go straight on to the agenda if I may, which is the first item is declarations of any disclosable cunary interest. To receive any additional interest not already registered, please councillors. Obviously, if anything should become apparent during the course of our conversations, please do declare it. At this point, I'd like to highlight that I'd like to use my chairman's discretion and play with the running order, if I may. Currently, and I'm really mindful that we've got a lot of people here, and I don't want to take up hold of your lives. Agenda item 512, which is the discussion item and decision regarding whether we go ahead for the feasibility of alternative land use of Mumford Road allotments, I propose that we move up from agenda item 512 and put it after the committee minutes at 5:07. Is that in agreement with you all, please, team?
Yes.
Any objections? Super. Thank you very much. So, apologies for absence, please, Karen. Thank you very much. We then move on to confirm the minutes of the full council meeting held 25th of October to be confirmed to the true record, and this is to agree the accuracy of the minutes. You've all had these circulated previously. Go through page one, page two, page three, page four. Are we all happy that they're a true and fair reflection of our last meeting, please?
Agreed.
Any objections? Super. Thank you very much. In that case, we move on to the committee minutes and we start off the Special Heritage and Town Events Committee, which was held on the 1st of November, and I'm really sorry you're going to have to hear my dulcet tones again. These have been circulated previously. It's all resolved business in relation to the Heritage Master Plan. I beg leave to move the minutes.
Agreed.
We then move on to the amenities committee councillor Jeremy, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These are the minutes from the ordinary monthly meeting of the amenities committee held on the 2nd of November. We like to move the minutes up to the below the lines section, and there are no recommendations.
Those minutes are moved, please, team.
Agreed.
Thank you. We then move on to the personnel committee held on the 8th of November, please. Councillor Cannon.
Yes, I'm pleased to present the personnel meetings on the 8th of the 11th, 2022. There are two recommendations, but I think one has automatically done because of the Personnel Committee budget, 2324, to be approved and consolidated by the Finance Committee. I don't think you need to vote on that, do you?
No, because that will come up as part of our discussion.
Yeah, and the following one was that full council agreed to sign the civility and respect pledge. I'll just give you a little bit of update on that. Because the conference that was going to be held in the Carnegie got cancelled, certain councillors asked some questions at personnel. The idea of this civility and respect pledge is over 500 councils so far have signed it. And what they're basically trying to do is that that goes through to central government to say all these councils have signed up for it, then they might take some action because at the present moment, the only action that staff or ourselves have got within each other is Breckland Council. But this is to help speed up a process so that rather than just going to Breckland, other things can be done. I'm muddling up here, Tina, aren't I? But that's the gist of it, isn't it? At the moment, no action can be taken. We can't say to a councillor at the moment, you are so rude in every meeting, the council have voted, but you do not attend six meetings. We can't do that. So what we're actually trying to say is we need to be able to change things. And at this present moment in town, we can't, we have to go to Breckland and, you know, go through that process. But this is what local parish and towns of councillors are standing up for. I think they've all been sent the copy.
Thank you, councillor Cannon. So the recommendation is that full council agree to sign the civility and respect pledge. Councillor Hollis initially proposed that, and councillor Susan Downing seconded to that. Are you happy to stand by that proposal and seconding?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favour, please? Against? Abstentions? Thank you. That is carried.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move the minutes.
All agreed?
Agreed.
We then move on to the minutes of the planning committee held again on the 8th of November.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Present the minutes of the November planning meeting held on the 8th of November. It's all resolved business, pages one, two and three. Move the minutes.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Super. And then I'm afraid it's you again, councillor Wright, on venues and communications, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Present the November meeting of venues and communications held on the 9th of November. Again, this is all resolved business, pages one, two and three.
All agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We then move on to the cemetery committee on the 10th of the 11th, and that would be councillor Jeremy, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These are the minutes for the cemetery committee held on the 10th of November. The first and second recommendations are to the Finance Committee in relation to the budget. I don't think their recommendations for full council, I think they've been dealt with.
No, that's right. Because it's part of a wider contract, it has to go to finance.
Yeah, that's fine. Just making sure I was doing it right. So, other than those two, which have already been dealt with, there's no other recommendations. I'd like to move.
All agreed, please, team?
Agreed.
Thank you. So we then move on to the minutes of the Special Allotments Committee held on the 10th of November. Councillor Crawford, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the minutes for the 10th of the 11th allotment committee. There are two recommendations. One goes to the Financial Committee, and the second one is taken up in another agenda item later on.
That's the one that we're going to move up?
Move to.
Move the list, yeah, so it's listed as.
I'd like to move the minutes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All agreed, please, team?
Agreed.
Thank you. We then move on to the Special Amenities Committee on the 15th. Lots of special meetings. Councillor Jeremy, please.
Like a game of whack-it act, jumping up and down. This was for the Special Amenities Committee meeting. They're all special, but this one was extra special, held on the 15th of November, specifically to debate the bus station toilets and also our budget discussion. There is one recommendation for full council, which is 492, and the recommendation is that full council approve that the project's budget be amended for the additional contribution of £10,000 for the Fish Pass, and that money will be from the Open Space Reserve, and the code that that's been taken from is quoted in the recommendation. So I'd like to move that recommendation, please.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey, you proposed it initially, and Susan, councillor Downing, you seconded it. Are you happy to stand with those?
Yes.
Super. All those in favour, please? All those against? And abstentions? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Move the minutes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Agree to move minutes?
Agreed.
Super. And then we round things off on the minutes of the Finance Committee held on the 22nd of November. Sadly, you're hearing from me again. Apologies. So it's all resolved. Oh. Did she? No.
Previous one.
I'm reading the slides. So, it's all resolved items apart from one recommendation, which will be dealt with under agenda items 513 and 514. So in the absence of dealing with those two recommendations, I beg leave to move the minutes.
Agreed. Agreed.
Super. Thank you very much. So, as I outlined earlier, I would like to use my merril prerogative to rearrange the running order, and we will now take agenda item 512 now before we deal with any further business. So, agenda item is to consider in advance of Breckland Council and Greater Anglia commissioning the station feasibility study, the proposal that the committee agrees in principle to explore options for reallocating up to 100% of the Mumford Road allotments to other suitable sites in Thetford. The decision required is to consider and decide whether or not to support said feasibility study, after noting, as we have already heard today, it may have a potential impact on part or all of the Mumford Road allotment holders. I will open the floor to a discussion, please, team. Councillor Harvey.
Forgive me, I've got to read this because my mind's not what it was. This is my personal opinion. In this issue, whilst I'm aware of the possible benefits of investment in our station in the future, it's the cost to allotment holders that really concerns me. The plot holders have invested time, labour, money, et cetera, in getting their plots to be productive and a rewarding hobby. We hear a great deal about protecting our green spaces. Surely this space should be protected as well. Also, let us not forget the health benefits of having a plot, but to say, I'm really sorry, I can't remember how to write it now. Oh, sorry, I remember what it was now. The major issue is finding a real site. Do we have to ever relocate your lot? Because there's not any.
Thank you, councillor Harvey. Councillor Hollis, please.
Thank you, the chairman. Pretty much what Chris has said, and I have sort of made my thoughts clear on the previous meeting and the special allotment meeting, and it's already been said by our allotment holders that it is beneficial for the health and the wildlife, which this gentleman's picked out, which everybody seems to be shouting about at the moment. The allotments up there have been up there 100 years, please, if I'm correct. 100 years, and some of our allotment holders, I'm not going to say I've been on there that long, but have been on there a good amount of time, about 30 odd years. This is an established site. Allotment holders live close to it, so it's walking, so they're not driving. It's an established site, which is now wanting to be moved to other areas that aren't established. I mean, looking after their earth for years, it's going to be beneficial for their crops. Now they've got the uncertainty that if, if, or when, I should say, the feasibility studies come, and it will do, we know it will do, it's uncertainty of what they're going to do, because it's just going to be carried on over the years or however long. They're not going to know how to plant their crops. So they've got uncertainty, which is no good for anybody's health. So, again, I will stay, as I have done earlier in the thing, I will be standing alongside my allotment holders, I beg your pardon, and supporting them in any action they wish to do. I will speak for them.
Thank you, councillor Hollis. And in the interest of clarity and transparency, which was a word that we've been using a lot recently, so that anybody watching this back at a later date is aware, there was an informal meeting with members of this council and representatives of the allotment holders discussing potentially what possibly could happen, and should this council decide to go down the feasibility route, what that would potentially mean. And I keep using these specific terms, potentially, possibly, because it is, it would be an exploration. But that decision is not for me to make, it is for this body to make. I have councillor Crawford, councillor Brame and councillor Jeremy. I'll take you in that order, please.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I'm speaking, I'm in the quandary about this. I mean, I think the allotments are a very, very intrinsic, important part of this town, everything, but I have a trouble with not going ahead with the feasibility study because we don't know what the feasibility study is going to say, and I find it very difficult to vote for something that I do not know is going to happen. Now, I've been looking for guarantees tonight at the informal meeting. I asked about whether, if we disagree with the allotments being taken, whether they can compulsively purchase them or not, and I didn't get any kind of definitive answer on to that. And so, but I do think that for the good of Thetford, we need to go forward with the feasibility study, and then from there we can take our stance on whether we want the allotments moved or not. Personally, I prefer them not to be moved, but until we have the study, we don't know.
Thank you, councillor Crawford. Councillor Brame, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Reading the recommendation, it states that Breckland are, with Greater Anglia, going to do a feasibility study of our ways, and what can happen up there, which includes the allotments. Now, I agree with everything that councillor Harvey has said and councillor Hollis. The only thing that I can't in all consciousness do is to vote not to be involved in what's happening. We can't represent these people from the allotment. They're telling us they don't want it. Fine, we now can go to this representation, knowing that the members of the allotment don't want it. We can find out what the options are. We, as a town council, can invite you back in and say, these are the options. We can't do none of that if we say no. There is no point at all in having a body with the power and the influence that this council has got and tell them, stick your head up your and do not attend a meeting to find out what's going to happen to that complete area of Thetford. So, I agree, I understand why you don't want it, but I cannot defend that by not going. I've got to go, I've got to be part of, so it allows me and these councillors to bring it back to you people to say, this is what's going to happen. By telling us, don't go, all that will happen is that we will be the same as you. Breckland will tell us they've had their visibility study, and this is going to happen, which could be that they're going to make it into a car park. If we haven't been in there to find out where we can move allotments to, then you could end up with nothing. So I just say to you, please, don't tie our hands behind our back. We are going to be there to represent the allotment, but we're better there representing you than we are sitting on our hands. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brame. Councillor Jeremy, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For those of you that know me, you will know that one of my personal pleasures is my garden. And, you know, it's something particularly during Covid and the last few years, I've really put an awful lot of effort into. And frankly, I would love to have my own allotment, but I just don't have the time. But I can entirely see the benefits that come from either, you know, gardening at home or gardening on an allotment. And it's always been a great sort of pride for me that we, as a council, have so many allotments. And whilst, you know, we all have frustrations about how they're managed and communication and everything, but I do think the town council has a really important role to support and encourage and facilitate people to have an allotment if that's what they want to do. And I think we've, you know, done that particularly well over the last few years, and Dennis and Chris and other members of the allotment committee have really been working hard to improve the situation. As councillor Brame just said, we don't have an agenda item before us tonight to decide on whether it is we want a train station or improvements at the train station or changes at the train station without qualifying that, or allotments. What we are deciding is, do we want to consider what the possibilities are? Now, we all sit around this table on a very regular basis and complain about a lack of information before we make decisions. I'm one of the ones that complains the most. I want to be as informed as I possibly can before I put my hand up to vote one way or the other. And for me, to not go ahead with a feasibility study isn't an option. I want the feasibility study to inform what I want, what may be possible, so that I can put my hand up to say this is what I want versus the other. We have the potential, we don't know because it's not confirmed, but we have the potential for huge investment into Thetford Train Station. And frankly, I think we would be negligent not to at least consider what those options are. Myself and others have raised the point about a lack of disabled access at Thetford Train Station for years. For as long as I've been alive, the train station has had poor disabled access. One of the absolute musts for this, if this were to go ahead, would be to improve the disabled access at Thetford Train Station, improved facilities. When I get on the train and I go through places like Wyndham, I'm really sad that Thetford Train Station isn't better. You know, it's a really fantastic historic train station, and we could be making more of it. The signal box, if you stand on the bridge and look towards Brandon, the signal box at Thetford Train Station is one of only six of its kind in the country. It's boarded up, the windows are broken, and we should be embracing these heritage assets and making more of it for a whole number of reasons. What the feasibility study will do is show us what is possible and what isn't possible, because it may be that the improvements they want to make practically don't work. It just may not be physically possible from an engineering point of view, and frankly, the finances might stack up. Somebody's got to pay for all these improvements to go on, and there might not be the money for it to actually happen. The young lady at the back spoke about a climate emergency. I voted in favour at Breckland of declaring a climate emergency. It's probably even more urgent now than it was then. If the improvements were to go ahead at Thetford Train Station, we would see significant improved usage. I want to get more people onto the train, you know, significantly more people. And one of the conditions of the project going ahead, if it were to go ahead, would be more people using it. That's how the financial case would stack up for Greater Anglia, and I think that would be a really good thing to see more people using the train. And so I will be voting in favour of the recommendation. I think frankly, we've got an obligation to the wider Thetford to look at what those options are. But we must be absolutely fair and honest to our allotment holders, and it's great to see so many people here. I wish there was more. We meet every Tuesday. Last Tuesday of the month, do come and, we are a democratic body, we are all up for election. Come and watch the decisions that we debate every single month. Moving forward, we should absolutely consult with allotment holders, we should engage people, we should be transparent. One of the conditions for me is if this is going to go ahead, and it's years away, some of the people here may not even be allotment holders then, because, you know, there is a churn, it's that's a natural part of the process. But one of the conditions for me is that we should absolutely in Thetford have no fewer allotments in the town as a whole than we do now. Absolutely, we can't decrease the amount of allotments, and that's going to be certainly one of my conditions if it does go ahead. And there should absolutely be some sort of compensation for anybody that's displaced, because I know the time, effort and money that goes into looking after people's allotments. So these are some of my own personal conditions. The other councillors may have them. But at this particular moment in time, yes, I will be voting for the recommendation, and I would hope that others do too. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeremy. Whilst I have councillor Brame and councillor Crawford indicating to speak again, I am mindful of hearing from councillors who haven't already spoken, and then I will do the second sweep round, if that's okay. Councillor Wright, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very much in favour of investment into our station, I've banged on for many years about that. What I do not see is the need to lose the allotments completely. You know, if you're looking for car parking, you've got Carter's Yard there, you can use that for your car parking, and move them up onto industrial estate. I do admit, we do need improved access to the north side of the town because the north side is growing. So the old original station lane that used to go down there could be improved to allow that access to taxis and that to come down, but it doesn't need to say the whole allotments to be taken away. Now, whether that can be a decision that can be brought in, or whether our feasibility study is purely going along the lines to look at the allotment site, and I suspect it is, I'm afraid, we've got to think outside the box. The, over the years, Network Rail have failed us with the car parking up there. They've sold off pieces of land which could be used for car parking. We're now in a situation of catch-up, where we've got to put it, oh, it's an easy win to use Thetford allotments. But Carter's Yard, to me, seems the ideal place to put car parking. Improve the access road so taxis can get down there, improve the disabled access. Job done. You don't have to lose the allotments. If we're going to have allotments moving, they're not going to be in the places where people live, you know, and that's the real disappointing thing. You don't want people driving half a mile to go to an allotment when they should be walking up there and using the wheelbarrow. But so, I'm torn, if we're looking at feasibility study, then we need to look at all options rather than purely looking at the allotment site. And I don't know whether I'm going to get a guarantee for that. It is in our gift, it is our land, we can say no, but as councillor Brame said, if we don't embrace the whole procedure, then we don't get involved in the decision-making process, and we could get things taken away from us. So I would probably vote against us doing it, on that reason that, you know, I'm against allotments being handled.
Thank you, councillor Wright. Councillor Barretto, please.
Madam Mayor, I just have a few points. I mean, people keep knocking on wood about net zero, and the whole point of transforming allotments, which is getting nervous, where people, you know, go there, they're losing their own food, it's good for their mental health, keeps people out in the outdoors, doing other things rather than being isolated. The benefits, I've repeated times and times over, well, 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 aware of it, but the whole point of the potential of transforming allotments in car parks is something I can't possibly agree with, because they're in the middle of town, they're accessible, they're local to the people that use them, and obviously the people that use them, lots of people. That is very clear. There's also the whole thing about trying to build cycling routes and walking paths and encouraging people to be more green and using less of their cars, et cetera. So I think the rail and Breckland not to be looking at the whole, the overall thing rather than focus on the station itself. Do they want to encourage people to cycle and to walk into the station and take public transport, or do they want people to drive to the stations to take the train? I think ultimately, this is not so much about how people get there, ultimately it's about the cost of the train ticket. The rail will invest in the train station with or without the allotments, but ultimately to them is an investment. If they're going to put money on the feasibility study, the way I see it, they are investing to get some return, put the station up and running so they can get return on that investment. I think that investment, from my perspective, is better looked at by reviewing the prices that charge people to actually take the train rather than whether or not they're going to take a patch of allotments. But that's my point of view. I think rather than looking at whether or not we should be taking space from the allotments, we should be as a united front, together with allotment holders and with residents we represent, just trying to get, put our feet down and say, okay, we want investment, yes, to improve facilities, make it disability friendly on the station, make the ticketing more affordable, generate a vibrant environment inside of the walls that are existing there, because it's an heritage building as it is in the station, but maximize and bring it to this century, you know, keep the structure and the heritage in it, but make it modern enough that it's comfortable enough for people to use it, and to be encouraged for people to take the leap to actually take the train rather than taking other alternatives. And I think as a united front, we should be working with the locals to reinforce that to the rails, to the rail station, to the British Rail, to the Great Hainley Rail, to actually, for them to invest on the station rather than invest on the parking. The parking is only going to attract cars, it's not necessarily going to attract travellers. Travels will take the bus, will take the train. They won't necessarily need their cars for that. It's a small town, we have to look at infrastructure as whole, the links between the public buses with the train, et cetera. It all comes down to money, I'm well aware of it, but not everything is about money. I know they want the return on that investment, but we have to look at what's best for the town. I think as a town, we should be united and enforcing to them that, yes, we want the investment, yes, we want a better train station, but no, we don't want to touch our allotments because the people are sovereign. Let's be clouty. That's my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McDonald, please.
Fellow councillors, I pretty much agree with everything you've said. And, you know, when we look at our town, one of the great things about Thetford is its green. And, you know, when we look at our town, one of the great things about Thetford is its green spaces. If we lose all the green spaces, it becomes another faceless town. So for that reason alone, you know, I would wish to stand with you and say, we need our green space, we need our allotments. However, I would pick up on a couple of points. If it was to change, and we've got to be aware that, you know, things change and, you know, it is inevitable in some form or another. We talked about keeping the amount of allotments we have in a town currently. Well, actually, our population is doing nothing but going up. So I kind of disagree with that. I think we should have more allotments. Maybe, not where they are now, maybe not. Maybe we need them further out in our new growing town as community hubs, very much like yours as a community hub. And that's what they really should be. And I do also agree that the feasibility study has to be looked at. We've got to be joined in with it because otherwise, we're not going to know what people are thinking about our town. And it is ours. It's not Breckland's or Network Rail's. We need to be involved. With that feasibility, it isn't just about the allotment or our green spaces. It is also about the whole infrastructure and the development and our futures and our kids' futures in this place. Hopefully, they might even have a feasibility study at that bridge but constantly get struck all the time. Maybe it'll be part of it, I don't know. So we've got to try and put something good out of what initially might seem a negative thing. So on that basis alone, whilst I'm against, very much against losing green space, we need to be in the fight to understand what the possibilities are for our people. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McDonagh. Councillor Downing, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have spent a long night worrying about this because I was personally very much support the green initiative in Breckland. And I feel, I can see the arguments on both sides, but the way that this feasibility study is worded is very unfortunate, I believe, because it looks as if the worst option may, which would be, you know, losing the allotments, moving somewhere else, is, could be very possible. And I think at this moment, with climate change and the way that our society is, we ought to be hanging on to every bit of green space we can. And I feel that we don't take into account enough. Several residents have mentioned various planning applications and so on that have gone, you know, the wrong way. And I think it's something that I think you have to make your own judgement about these things. And reluctantly, I've come to think that I cannot support this feasibility study in the way in which it's proposed at the moment.
Councillor Downing. Councillor Brindle, you indicated to speak a little while ago and I missed you. Apologies. I'll take you and then I'll take councillor Tullit, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm like Terry, a very keen gardener. I spend a lot of time and have over the years trying to grow natural and to enjoy the benefits of the open air. I'm also, however, I must say, a keen rail user. And I think it's worth pointing out that encouraging rail use might well be a green initiative on its own. It is clearly better to get people on trains than to get them on roads. I use Thetford Station quite a bit. I find it stunningly wonderful that I can go and visit my family in Edinburgh for a day. I can spend five hours on the train, have six hours there and five hours coming back. That's a huge benefit to me and I don't want to lose it. I want to have a decent station. At the moment, we've got a fairly indecent station. The rail bridge is quite appalling. There are no facilities for food or drink. Despite the fact, as has been pointed out, I think at Wyndham, you can do both, got decent bridge and they've got food and drink, although it's a smaller station than ours. We have 226,000 uses of the station each year, probably twelve or twenty of them. We deserve a better station. Is there any way we should be turning down the prospect of looking for a better station? I don't think there is. I think what we have to do is, but is to say is, but we're also very concerned indeed to protect the right of Thetford citizens, some Thetford citizens, a smaller number of course than the total number, to have allotments and to enjoy the benefits of allotments. I think we should go ahead with the proposal of the feasibility study and look at what they say. We had a discussion this afternoon that some members of the public and some councillors were at, at which it was made plain that we could perhaps get some of the benefits of an improved station without losing the allotments. So I think there's still, is it a faint or a slight or a small chance of a win-win situation where we get a better station desperately needed and where we keep allotments? That's a worthwhile target. And until we have a feasibility statement made, we're not going to know whether that's possible. So I think roll on the feasibility statement, then the serious discussion begins. How can we protect the allotments? How can we improve the station?
Thank you, councillor Brindle. Councillor Tullit, please.
I first moved to Thetford in 1973 and travelled up by train. And I can remember looking out that train station, train station, looking at the train over the Ely Flats and the Fennens and thinking, my goodness, what have I let myself in for? Fifty years later, I'm still here, still loving Thetford. But in 1976, I used the train service and I found I would never ever use it again. Sitting on Ely Station was a nightmare as a single woman late at night and Thetford Station wasn't very inviting. I had to use the train station again and the railway system when I changed jobs in the early twenties. And lo and behold, things have changed. There were shops. The stations in London were vibrant, there were shops, you could even get sushi in the Marks and Spencer's. Even Ely Station, you had a decent cup of coffee, a nice warm place to stay. But here I am, fifty years later, old and battered and so is Thetford Station. You know, I'm at the end of my life, I expect. And I think Thetford Station and I think the people of Thetford deserve a good station. I think the feasibility study has to go ahead because, you know, it is what it is. You can't make a decision unless you know what all the options are. And I do feel for the allotment holders and they are, you know, it is a, you know, beneficial for everyone to have an allotment. But, you know, there's a whole big population out there in Thetford and I think a good station is well deserved.
Thank you, councillor Tullit. And before I go back to a couple of councillors who have indicated they would like to speak again, I'm mindful that I haven't heard from councillor Hodgkinson and councillor Canham. Would you like to speak at this point? Thank you, councillor Hodgkinson.
I haven't really got much to add to what's been said and I think a lot of good things have been said. But I will say that I think we should go ahead and say yes to the feasibility study because we need to know what the options are.
Councillor Hodgkinson. Councillor Canham, is there anything you want to add to the discussion?
I've listened to everything.
Right, so I have got councillor Bream, councillor Hollis and then councillor Barretto to speak again. I will then probably draw this to a close and look to seek some resolution on this agenda item. So councillor Bream, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two very small points. Firstly, the more use we get on this line from Thetford will make it far more greener because the other line that goes from London to Norwich is all electric. There are no diesels, no nothing, it's all electric. Now, if we can get the same amount of people want to come this way, we can go all electric. So that is great for the greener possibilities of what's going to happen and the green industry. The other thing which is really, I would like to say to the councillors sitting around this table. Terry informed us that the old signal box that stands at Thetford Station is all boarded up and looks horrible and is one of only six in the country. Many of you will know I have quite a little bit to do with Brandon. There were seven of those signal boxes in the country, but Brandon Town Council decided not to talk to Greater Rail, not to get involved with Breckland and they would have nothing to do with it. They now don't have a signal box. It's gone. They are about to lose the station buildings because they would not get involved and nobody ever heard what the people were saying in Brandon. The people of Brandon didn't get the representation they deserved. And I ask you around this table to make sure that these people get the representation in the right place. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bream. Councillor Hollis, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just being with great enthusiasm I am with about this, being in the feasibility or not. All the things that have been said about the railway station, that can be done without touching allotments, I'm sure. The signal box, if it's boxed, if it's boarded up, that's the International Rail when that, what's that got to do with the allotment holders? And as for getting, as for getting information and not having the right information in front of us, I do believe it's the comment councillor Jeremy said, is on the border, the G D T thing. So surely he gets the information before it's passed on to the other councillors. Thank you.
I'm all knowing.
Thank you, councillor Hollis and thank you omnipotent councillor Jeremy. Councillor Barretto, please.
One last point from, after hearing some of my colleagues around the table. This is a feasibility study, but the question is, what are we studying? Are we studying something already? No, for a fact, that we need an improved train station? That most of the people, including all the allotment holders, do not want to give up their allotments? That the public is against, we're losing that green spaces? There's not much of an issue to study there, it's not rocket science. We need to put funds into the station, make it modern, make it comfortable. And actually, well, like I mentioned, I mentioned here on the previous informal meeting just prior to this one with some of the members here, that that was well advertised by the rail group that they were looking for tenants and people to use the station, to put a little cafe inside, to make it more comfortable for visitors and travellers alike. And whilst they advertised it then wisely, they never actually got around to answer any of the proposals that they came on the table and actually took their words on board and actually put the people in the building to make the building more vibrant and actually more comfortable for the people that use it. So there are alternatives. The reason why I'm not going to be voting in favour of the feasibility study is because we're going to be studying something where to find out what we can do with the building when we already know what can be done with the building. They already put that out in the public for several times over. And now they want to study the whole of the thing, including the allotments? My question is why? Pick those 50% from the British Rail group, pick the 50% from the Breckland Council, create a planning plan for the heritage building, which is the station, keep the walls, modern the place inside and make it comfortable for the travellers. And by the way, send a message to the British Rail, to the rail group that if they can lower the price, they're more likely to get more people through the doors. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barretto. So the decision required is to consider and decide on whether or not to support the feasibility study after noting it may have a potential impact on part or all of the Mumford Road allotments. It's your choice, council, yes or no, ultimately. Do we want to consider supporting this feasibility study, please? Do I have a proposal? Councillor Canham.
Could I just ask a question on that? I think I did give it to the chairman of the committee, but there we go. If we agree to it, but with the proviso that the town council and the allotment holders are kept up to date on a regular basis so that if anything changes within a month, they can talk about it with the council.
It is in your gift to make an amendment to that recommendation and I'm really pleased that, you know, we're exploring possibilities. If there is alternative wording that you want to look at, again, that is in your gift. Is that your proposal, councillor Canham? Could you reread?
You can change the wording if you like because I'm not posh with wording. But basically, what I'm saying is that with the proviso, that the, we agree with the, what is that? Yes, getting late and it's sitting here all night, the feasibility study. But the proviso is that the town council and the allotment holders are kept up to date on a regular basis.
So your proposal is that Thetford Town Council supports the feasibility study, noting that it may have a potential impact on part or all of the Mumford Road allotments, providing we can keep everybody informed?
Yeah, but basically what I'm trying to say is, as they're going through their feasibility study, all of a sudden if they say, right, we're going to take the whole of the allotments, then the town council and the allotment holders have got the right to say no because I think the gentleman earlier said, it's not just about the allotments. It was also about the station. Do we want to lose that bit of it? No, but we might say no to the allotments, you know, I don't know. But so basically, it's keeping us up to date and we vote on it as it goes along.
I'm just really mindful, and I apologise to the members of the public because I'm really mindful that a badly worded recommendation and agreement causes a lot of grief. And I want us to be really, really specific that everybody knows what they are either voting for or against. And I think it's too important to be a bit haphazard on it. Councillor Crawford.
Yeah, I think we should resolve the, with the one we've got, but with the addition, not just kept up to date, but consulted about it. The allotment holders are consulted about.
Please give me some words, councillor Jeremy.
Well, I'm just, some snappy words maybe, but ultimately what we're requesting is an amendment so that it's yes, subject to ongoing engagement and consultation with the Mumford Road allotment holders.
Yeah, and the council.
So the proposal on the table is that Thetford Town Council agrees to support the feasibility study with?
Subject to.
Subject to.
The allotment holder's being consulted.
That's lovely. Thank you.
Under the town council.
And the town council, yeah.
Vote on that, please. You're very welcome to have a recorded vote. Do I need to second on that one or don't? We do need to second it for the proposal if.
Happy to second.
Councillor Brindle, thank you. All those in favour, please.
The amendment, sorry.
This is the amendment because we vote on the amendment first. If the amendment is then defeated, we vote on the substantive motion.
Sorry, you're going to have to.
You're going to have to hold your hands up. Against? So Harvey, you're against, right?
Okay.
Thank you. Abstentions. Have we got a full house then in that case? That motion is carried. Thank you all very, very much for your time. Thank you to the allotment holders and residents that have attended.
And the amendment first.
The amendment has been carried, so that's it. Yes, it's done. Don't need to vote on the substantive, yeah, just, yeah, the amendment's carried. We'll pause for two moments. I get the feeling that everyone wants to leave.
Sitting here too long. Back to me, but, you know, we had that first bit, didn't we? The trouble is, you know, I think, no. I can't say no because I'm not very bad and to go to do the feasibility study. And then it's like, I would say no. I thought, so you don't get that. I'm actually, this is on YouTube.
Meeting will be resuming in two minutes.